State Senator Rob Sampson and I will be discussing a couple of issues here in the state of Connecticut, including this police accountability bill that was passed in the Senate and very likely going to get signed by the governor. Senator Sampson, welcome to Talk of the Town.
How you doing, Steve? Glad to join you as always.
Always a pleasure to have you on.
This morning.
It's a pleasure to have you on. Have you gotten some rest?
Yes, barely. Yeah, the few days leading up to session, I didn't get much sleep because there was a lot of preparation. I think I spent maybe close to four hours on the floor of the Senate debating the four bills that were before us. And of course, that takes a lot of preparation, a lot of note taking and kind of drafting a plan for what you want to say and how you're going to say it. And then, of course, we got home at 5:00 a.m. yesterday. And of course, I was back at it around 10:00. But thankfully, I got a good night's sleep last night and feeling closer to normal anyway.
Yeah, I tell you, I don't know how you all do this sometimes and still have a regular job. It's pretty impressive to me. Now, the problem is, however, this police accountability bill that was voted on and passed in the Senate and in the House, was there any alteration to the original bill or did all of that debate mean nothing?
Depends on what you mean by the original bill.
Well.
I mean, there were a few iterations of this document over the last several months. I think most people became aware of it when there was a particular version, which is known as LCO 3471, is when most of the public really got their hands on a document and started to review it. And that's how we do things with documents, by the way, Steve, is that there might be a bill number. In this case, I think the bill number was House Bill 6004. But that could mean anything because bill numbers stay the same, but the document might change over time through a committee process or even amendments and that kind of thing. So when you want to refer to a specific document, there's an LCO number. An LCO stands for Legislative Commissioner's Office, which is essentially the staff, nonpartisan attorneys who put everything into legal language. So 3471 was the number that everybody saw, and we ended up voting on a different numbered document. But it was more or less the same. There were only technical changes as far as I could tell.
So it seems like all the debate, all the concerns about this withdrawing of qualified immunity kind of fell on deaf ears.
Yes. Well, you know, the thing is, the majority, they made several changes to the language in that section, but they never changed what it actually did, which is eliminating qualified immunity for police officers. They kind of skirted that issue, said they were trying to mirror the federal language, et cetera. But at the end of the day, the result of the words, even if they were changed, was the same, which is that police officers would no longer enjoy something that is a very, very important aspect of, you know, their ability to do their job, which is immunity from prosecution and civil liability, rather, not prosecution, immunity from civil liability for frivolous cases. It's very frustrating because the proponents of this legislation have been constantly trying to repeat that police officers are immune. They're not immune. They have qualified immunity. And that word qualified means something. And in order to qualify for the immunity, basically, that means that you have to be acting within the law and within the policies and procedures of the job. In those cases, you should be protected. I think each of us, you know, when we go to work, we have an expectation that if we're doing our job as we are asked by our employers and we're not breaking any laws, that we shouldn't be sued for that. And if it's something that the business is asking us to do, well, they can be responsible. Well, this is the same situation here. Police officers who are doing their business properly do not deserve to be sued. And as a result, that's why we have qualified immunity. This bill seeks to eliminate that, which is a terrible provision, given what police officers do on a day-to-day basis.
My problem with it, too, is we just know for a fact that there's going to be attorneys lined up down the block waiting to file lawsuits over any perceived slight. And it's no longer going to be that you file a complaint with the police or whoever, the Oversight Committee, whatever, you know, is set up. They investigate, they find out whether there's any validity to that. And then there's, you know, there's an outcome, whether pro or con, however it ends up. This now is going to take that away. At the same time, they're talking about putting together these Oversight Committees, they're going to move the responsibility for those decisions as to whether or not the police officer acted properly and appropriately out of their hands and into the hands of a jury. And as we all know, juries can be rather fickle, to say the least.
I couldn't agree more. I couldn't agree more. Yeah, I mean, you just think, Steve, about all of the different types of calls that police officers respond to and how often they are in a situation where there is conflict. They show up for a domestic dispute, you have a couple arguing with each other, throwing pots and pans, God knows. Just being there at the wrong place and time can end you up in a lawsuit. And certainly, you know, we want our police officers to feel comfortable entering into those situations to prevent a worse outcome. Even responding to a call. You suppose someone calls 911, someone's breaking into my house at 3:00 in the morning. Do you want the police officer to be comfortable enough to drive to your home with lights and siren to get there quickly to protect you? Or do you want him to be so concerned that if he gets into a fender bender, that he's going to be personally responsible for the damage? These are the questions that came up during the debate, and they illustrate the difference between a reasonable amount of immunity to protect an officer who has a very difficult job and total immunity, which is what we're not talking about.
And again, that's why I think this whole conversation has been rather disingenuous because police officers have been sued, police officers have been arrested, police officers have been held accountable for when they have breached their responsibility and behaved outside of their prescribed role. So there is accountability. But this, like I said, you know, you brought up a great point. How many times have we heard where police officers have not gone after someone who's stolen a car because they're afraid they might hurt somebody or injure somebody if they engage in a high-speed pursuit? Well, this is just going to make it even more difficult for them to do their jobs because now it's not just going to be that, okay, we're not doing this for the safety of the public. I'm not going to do this because I might end up homeless.
Right. And Steve, to your point, and there were several of them in there that I'd like to comment on, but the first one is that what happened in Minneapolis happened in Minneapolis. It was a terrible situation. Clearly, you have a bad cop. But keep in mind, not a single person, I can't name a single soul in this entire country, there, here, or anywhere in the media, in the press, other police officers, who defended the actions of that officer in that circumstance. He was universally condemned for what he did. Everyone can see, as clear as day, it was wrong. There is no one counter protesting to say, no, no, let's not prosecute that cop. That is a bad cop. He deserves to be condemned. He deserves to be prosecuted. And the fact is that he will. I don't necessarily think that that is a reflection on Connecticut's police officers across our state and certainly not the ones that I represent in the 16th District. I think they are professionals. And yeah, that's not to say that if you went looking, you couldn't find a few bad apples here and there. And I agree, we need to do whatever we can to find ways to get rid of those folks and heighten the quality of our police departments. But I don't think it's fair to do legislation for political purposes that is far beyond a discussion about improving the responsible and practical police reforms that are necessary. This is a political bill intended to make hay out of that issue and drive a wedge between the people in our state and across the country and divide our communities. Instead of actually recognizing the hard job that police officers have to do and finding a way to help them improve the quality of their departments and find a way to hold the bad cops accountable. If there was a policy put before me that would actually allow good officers to thrive and punish bad police officers, I would have voted for it. This was not it.
Well, and you mentioned the politics in this, and I think unfortunately, this whole thing has now just become a political cudgel that's being used and, you know, to make the cops out to be bad guys. I know you were on hold when my previous caller and I were talking about this bill that Senator Murphy has proposed to remove police officers and resource officers from schools. I mean, to me, that is just naked politics. I mean, it doesn't get any more political than that.
It's asinine, Steve. It's completely, utterly asinine. For the congressman, or the, I'm sorry, the senator, former congressman from Connecticut, to be suggesting that police school resource officers in our schools is a bad idea is insanity. Does he remember December 14th, 2012? I do. The whole point was that if we had school resource officers on that fateful day, then we might not have had that terrible tragedy in Newtown. And at least it may not have been quite as bad. I can't believe that less than 10 years later that the senator has forgotten that. School resource officers do tremendous good. I've been in contact with a number of them over the years. I know how well they work out in our local schools. The students develop a camaraderie with these officers. They don't perceive them as a threat or dangerous. They're not afraid to go to school because there's a police officer there and I'm going to get killed by him. I mean, that's an absurd argument. But that's almost the argument that Murphy is trying to make, is that people are afraid of cops. Look, I understand that there are people who live across our state in communities and that certain people, minorities, look at police officers with some element of fear. But that is so tremendously unfortunate because the facts do not bear it out. Police violence on citizens is the most rare thing that you can think of. You're more likely to be struck by lightning. And yet, that is an argument that continues to be pushed by the advocates for this bill and the advocates for division in our country. And we just got to come to terms with that and get people to understand that cops are not evil. They are there to protect and serve. And if they were not in those, you know, urban communities, the situation would be much worse.
I'm reminded, I told this story on the air a while back, but there was, I think it was out in Minneapolis when these protests were going on and people were talking about, you know, disband the police department, disband the police department. And they were having these violent protests. And there was a store owner who had a bunch of these protesters out in front of his store. And to defend his store, he pulled out a chainsaw and started the chainsaw and just started saying, you know, get out of my store, stay away from my store, don't burn my store down. And you could hear the crowd in the background going, oh, my God, he's got a chainsaw, someone call the police. It was like, do you not even know how idiotic you sound when you do that? You're against the police, you wanted to disband the police, but your first reaction when somebody's waving a chainsaw at you in defense of their business is to ask for a policeman?
Right.
It's just absurd. And again, now we have these things like in Cambridge, Massachusetts now, there's a proposal that's been introduced to have unarmed city workers take care of traffic duties, like pulling people over for running stop signs and speeding. Like, all of this stuff is being done for political purposes to make these people look like, A, they're doing something and that they're out there protecting the people, when people are going to die because of these decisions.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, the places where crime is the worst are the ones that will be most negatively impacted. And those are our urban environments, our cities across Connecticut. If you make it so, it's difficult to become a police officer and to serve there because of the loss of qualified immunity and the overall constant rhetoric and political attacks against police officers, which I don't know why anyone would want to be a cop right now anyway, Steve. It sounds like an unbelievably risky job. It sounds like, you know, you're almost walking into a war zone because people have come to hate you so much just because of the badge that you wear and the color of your uniform. You know, a lot of this argument has to do with racism. And racism essentially is basically putting people into categories by superficial characteristics, like the color of their skin. Well, isn't that exactly what we're doing with police officers in this case? Isn't that what the Democrats have done? They have said that if you're wearing a badge and a blue uniform, you are a bad person. And we have to just stop doing that. I think, you know, what I've noticed over the past several weeks, Steve, when talking to constituents and people on all sides of issues, there is this terrible assumption that I think people have that their neighbors are bad people, that if they disagree with them on any issue whatsoever, they are a terrible human being. And the reason why they disagree is because they have some sort of hatred in their heart. And I can't for the life of me understand why that is. People are on both sides of this issue. And I think most of them, it's because they want the same thing, which is they want good cops and no bad cops. And they want to live in a world that is safe. I think that is in universal agreement for both sides of that discussion. There was another bill on the agenda the other day about capping the cost of insulin. I voted against the bill. And I voted against the bill because I recognize that the policy is bad. I've read the actual bill. I know every word in the bill. The people that are attacking me, saying that I want to hurt people that have diabetes, have never read the bill. So they don't know what even says. And they will listen to the rhetoric during this upcoming political campaign about how I'm out to get people. Why would anyone even believe that? Why would any legislator in either party vote for policy that hurts people? I voted no because this bill will ultimately raise the cost of health insurance for everyone, something I've been fighting against. And I had to make a choice. Do we make this very, very tiny change that will benefit a handful of people? And not really, because we're actually doing many other things, including on a federal level, the governor's, the president's executive orders on insulin will have far more and greater, more positive effect on the purchase of insulin by consumers. This bill does hardly anything in that arena, but it will jack up insurance rates. So I voted no. There's a legitimate reason for the votes that we take. And I just wish people would recognize that there's good in the hearts of our neighbors and just not be so prepared to jump all over them as if they're out to get you.
Another issue that came before you in the Senate was this absentee ballot. This, again, I can't believe this went through almost unanimously.
Yes. Well, I voted for the bill, Steve. And in fact, there was only one no vote in the Senate, and that was from a Democrat, actually. And that's because the bill does almost nothing. There's a lot of confusion about what the bill actually says. There is something that I think we all universally agree on, and that is that COVID-19 should be an acceptable reason to obtain an absentee ballot. It is indeed an illness, and illness is already covered. I have some disagreement about whether the bill was even necessary because the word illness already is listed as a reasonable excuse for an absentee ballot. And I went through that with them. But we wanted to make clear as Republicans that we do support that policy, that you should be able to get an absentee ballot application if you have COVID-19 or have the potential to get the disease. The thing is that the bill does not do the other bad things that are happening. It does not grant the power to the Secretary of State to send out the mass mailing of absentee ballot applications, which I am absolutely opposed to. It is complete invitation to fraud, and we have seen the unbelievable amount of problems already. You've got ballots going to people that have moved out of state, or people are getting multiple ballots for people that used to live in the residence, ballots for folks that have passed on. It is a complete disaster. The Secretary of State knew that was going to happen when she did it, and she did it anyway. That is not in the bill. I would note, though, that I personally offered an amendment to actually prevent the Secretary of State from being able to do that in the November election. And I want the listeners that you have to know that every Republican voted for my amendment to prohibit that terrible policy, and every Democrat voted for it.
Voted against it, you mean?
Against the amendment, but for allowing the Secretary of State.
Well, then what was the purpose of this bill? Because, I mean, we saw with the primary ballots, just how bad these voter rolls are. They did it on their own accord of mailing out 1.2 million applications. And we saw, again, all the nightmare that caused. So what was the purpose of this bill? Just to add the language to say fear of an illness?
That is correct. More or less, yes. The Democrats did squeeze in a few other things that I do take objection with and I pointed out throughout the process. They did the expansion of Election Day registration to include people who are in line at 8:00 p.m. so they're able to register and still vote. It does create a lot of complications. I do not like the way they're doing the policy. I think it's actually in direct conflict with the notion of allowing people to vote absentee because of COVID-19. If the purpose of allowing people to vote absentee because of COVID-19 is to prevent the spread of the disease, so we're not having people stand in lines unnecessarily, then why is it we want to create lines at 8:00 p.m. on Election Day registration? And I did my best to try and get that taken out of the bill. And as you know, Steve, no piece of legislation that goes through our state legislature or on a federal level is going to be exactly how you want it. And this one was very much not like I wanted it, but I still thought it was, you know, 51 in favor and 49 against. So I voted in favor.
Yeah, I'm frustrated by the fact that the Secretary of State is doing so much on her own accord when many of these things, you know, they're taking advantage again of this opportunity that they have because of this state of emergency and costing us money. And again, just, we've seen so many problems with this. I played an audio of an interview that I did with Oz Gribel, who passed away last week, where he and I were talking about this very issue. And even during the conversation, he conceded that there was all kinds of problems with having mass absentee ballot voting going on and mail-in voting going on. But his position was, well, we can address that. Well, okay, until we address that, I don't think we need to be pushing forward on this.
I completely agree. And that's the takeaway from the legislative session that we just had on this bill, is that we all universally agree that COVID-19 should be an acceptable reason to get an absentee ballot. But Republicans absolutely disagree with the expansion of absentee balloting in the sense that we don't, we're not in favor of those mailboxes that are being installed all over the state. They are going to create an attractive nuisance, in my opinion. I'm very, very concerned that if those ballot boxes exist in November, there is a distinct chance that they will be vandalized. I mean, look around. I mean, you've got people willing to destroy statues and private property to make a political statement. What would stop them from destroying a mailbox full of, you know, votes, essentially? That concerns me greatly. The Secretary of State doing this mass mailing is extremely problematic. I see rampant voter fraud in the future as a result. And I would love to see us get a handle on it. But, you know, those are the breaks. They have the majority. And I gave them the opportunity to vote against that. And essentially, they sanctified it by refusing to take me up on my amendment and pass a law restricting her ability to do so.
Well, I just, it's going to be a nightmare come November. And I think any attempt, we've worked so hard for so many years to try to eliminate voter fraud, to try to make it as easy as possible for people to register. They do voter registration drives everywhere. You can go down and you can register anytime you want, you know. But again, if you're in line at 8:00 on Election Day, you know, maybe you shouldn't be voting. Maybe if you couldn't find the time on the other 364 days of the year to figure out how to get this done, maybe at the very last second, maybe, you know, it's your own fault at that point.
I agree. You know, I don't like the policy. I never have, I never have supported radical expansions of voter registration, voter absentee policies, et cetera. And all for one reason, that these policies, if you're going to have them, need to also be implemented, ensuring the integrity of the vote. And that is the problem, is that every time the Democrats in our state try to expand access to voting, which I theoretically would support, they simultaneously make it much less likely that we're going to catch any fraud or that we're going to, you know, prohibit any kind of evildoers from being involved in screwing with the election. That is the number one thing that we need to have. I have several times offered an amendment in the legislature, including during the early voting debate that happened last year, which, of course, that's going to happen again in the next year's session. And if it passes again by a simple majority, that will be the law in Connecticut. And I'm definitely opposed to that. But I offer an amendment repeatedly for voter identification because I think that voter identification is something that most people do not have a problem with. The arguments against it are weak, the idea that somehow we're attempting to suppress the vote because certain people are too poor to have an ID. I mean, that's the most ridiculous argument I ever heard in my life. I've even offered for us to subsidize the cost of a voting ID, if necessary, just to eliminate that argument. But I think it's insulting, in fact, to say that certain populations in our state, they can't handle, you know, doing the process like everyone else, registering to vote, having an identification when they show up, and participating in elections. I think that's insulting to them and to the intelligence of everyone else.
Well, I mean, I'm sure you've heard the term, the soft racism of low expectations, you know, it's, they always, always use this argument that, oh, it's just so difficult. Well, yeah, well, it's really not, actually. And it's kind of insulting to the community that you're trying to say that about. But, so final question for you here, sir, and I want to go back to this police accountability bill. There was a quote by Senator Maroney, I think it is?
Yeah.
Okay. He said that his predecessor, Gail Slossberg, counseled him to quote, "Not let the perfect be the enemy of the good." We do not have a perfect bill, but we do have a good bill. And I'm kind of stunned by that mindset because, look, your job is to craft the best legislation you can. And when you have been made very, very clearly aware of the problems that this removal of qualified immunity is going to cause, and it's not conjecture, it's not, you know, hyperbole, it's going to happen. And yet you still say, well, we don't want the perfect be the enemy of the good. That, to me, is bad legislating. What do you think?
I could not agree more. And I'm trying to think of the strongest wording possible to agree with you because the entire Democratic legislative process that is supposed to exist in our lawmaking in this state has been utterly and completely ignored by virtually every member of the Democratic Party that is elected into office. And I want to make that distinction because I'm not talking about your listeners who self-identify as Democrats. Our governor continues to pass executive orders, just signing things into law with his pen, far beyond the scope of his authority. That's number one. I got no problem with him when he is within the confines of his authority, when he is modifying existing laws for public health purposes, which is the power he was granted because of the emergency declaration. But when he is doing other things like expanding rental payments and basically putting forward political agenda items under the guise of being part of the emergency powers, he has gone too far. The Secretary of State, as we just pointed out, is sending out absentee ballot applications at great expense to the citizens of this state, knowing that they are erroneous and that the voter lists are a mess. Tens of thousands of people appear on our voter list that are not actual voters in our state. She said herself that 100,000 ballot applications were returned in the mail to her. So she knows just how bad that list is, and she did it anyway. And the special session, which was allegedly to bring us in to discuss the things that are so important to this emergency, which, last time I checked, had to do with COVID-19 and nothing else, two of the four bills are utterly unrelated. The insulin bill that I mentioned earlier doesn't even go into effect until March of 2022. I mean, the idea that that's an emergency we have to discuss today, a whole other legislature will be elected and serving before that ever even gets to become law. It could have been done a year from now, possibly two years from now. And the police accountability bill has absolutely nothing to do with COVID-19. And one thing I'll tell you about all four bills is that none of them had a proper public hearing. None of them were put in front of the public with the proper notice to allow people to participate in the process. And legislators, including myself, who is the ranking member of the Elections Committee, I didn't even get an invitation until 24 hours before this, you know, sad excuse for a public hearing, they called a listening session, to go over the bill that they had completely drafted behind closed doors without allowing my participation in. And this police bill, as you have noted over and over again, is just a political document. It is shameful. And but a common argument we heard from the Democrats last night, a lot of them who were very unsure of themselves in this vote, that, well, the bill might not be perfect, but we'll have the chance to come back in at some later date and fix it up. Well, that's not acceptable to me, especially when these changes are going to change the lives of so many police officers and the communities that they serve. And people will be less safe as a result. People may die as a result of the perfect not getting in the way of the good.
I couldn't have said it any better. I just, and I hate to use that kind of language when you're talking about laws, but these are laws that are going to be affecting the safety of people's lives. And yes, people are going to die. It's, you know, we hear it all the time when they were talking about net neutrality, and they're talking about this, and people are going to die, there's going to be dead people in the streets. No, this one legitimately is going to impact the safety of the citizens of the state of Connecticut. So hopefully...
I'm sorry.
Hopefully, when you get back into session next year, you can, they can maybe fix this. But I just, I'm not holding out a whole lot of hope.
Indeed. And it's not just the qualified immunity piece of this bill that is bad. There are quite a few. I'm not saying the whole bill is bad either. There are some good things in the bill, but they are far outweighed by the bad things. The removal of the provision that allows police officers to ask for a consentable search, just that one provision alone. There were numerous hypotheticals presented during the legislative debate that pointed out just how foolish that is. I imagine a child is kidnapped and someone witnesses a white van fleeing the scene. Well, because probable cause is now the standard, an officer a few blocks away who sees a white van, there's a real significant question about whether he can even pull that van over. van over. Uh, and then when he gets to actually pull the van over, if he's allowed to do that, which I don't think so under this bill, he is not even allowed to ask to search the vehicle.
Jeez, nuts. It's just nuts. Well, Senator Sampson, unfortunately we're out of time, I gotta let you go, but I really do appreciate your, uh, your efforts on this and I appreciate that, your time here today. Uh, I know you put in a lot of hard work and you put in a lot of time in trying to, to stop some of this stuff, but, uh, as usual, uh, there's a lockstep going on there and it's just, it's unbelievable to watch, especially when, look, it just ignores all of basic common sense and they just continue to push this, as you say, for political purposes and it's not the first time. So, State Senator Rob Sampson, sir, always a pleasure to have you on, but look forward to having you back.
The pleasure is mine, Steve. Thank you very much and have a great day.
You too, sir. Take care.